School board meeting of Monday, January twenty seven. This is the O N J Roberts Board of School Directors Regular Business Meeting being held on January twenty seven, twenty twenty five at six P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Presentation of Colors by the Navy Junior Reserves Officer Training Corps, followed by a moment of silence. Present colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on those serving in the United States Armed Forces, both past and present, the elected leaders for the state of Pennsylvania, and elected leaders of our nation. We have much to be thankful for in our community. Color Guard post colors. Executive Session Announcement. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates in executive session to discuss items in one or more of the following areas. Legal personnel or real estate matters on November eighteen, twenty twenty four, and January thirteen, twenty twenty five. We also, this evening, will be appointing our board members to the standing committees and as the representatives of the school board and various organizations. So we will be making the following appointments of board members to standing committees and school board representatives. For Curriculum and Special Education Committee, Ms. Sabo will remain Chair, Dr. Rattoli is Vice Chair, Ms. Chevelle Fuller and Mr. Chester. In Finance and Buildings and Grounds Committee, Chair will be Mr. Harmonos and Dr. Mel Mazak will be the Vice Chair. Ms. Evans and Ms. Munson are also on that committee. Legislative and Policy Committee, Ms. Evans will be the Chair with Ms. Munson as Vice Chair with Mr. Harmonos and Ms. Sabo. And the Personnel Committee will be chaired by Mr. Chester, Vice Chair, Dr. Rattoli, and members, Ms. Chevelle Fuller and Dr. Mel Mazak. The P S B A Region Representative will be Dr. Rattoli, Chester County Intermediate Unit Board, as well as the Chester County School Authority Board will be Ms. Munson. And the Chester County School Board's Legislative Council Representative will be Dr. Rattoli. I, once again, thank you all for your service and willingness to to support our district on these committees and do the additional work required, especially for those of you who are serving on organizations outside the district to represent our district. There's nothing, no other action we need to take, correct? Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Stout.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. We're going to start tonight with Maggie Mullen and the Student Council Report.
All right. In the elementary schools, the calendar has turned to twenty twenty five, and there are lots of amazing, amazing things happening at elementary schools. The students were excited for their first snow day, and learning kept moving successfully during our flexible instruction day. We are prepared for whatever Mother Nature, Mother Nature throws our way for the rest of the winter. Our school has had a successful science fair events with our students demonstrating high level of scientific thinking. All students who participated should be commended for their efforts, and we are excited to see many of our students move on to the Chester County Science Fair. Best wishes to all who are moving forward to that fair. Academically, January signals the midpoint of our school year, which means it is time for our students to complete their benchmark testing. We will be collecting mid-year data to see how much our students have grown and also to make adjustments to our instructional programming. We are excited to celebrate how much our students have learned in the first half of the year. Moving to middle school, middle school students are excited for their second semester as it brings them a change in their electives and specials. Students in the middle school band and orchestra were also in the spotlight recently as they held their winter concerts on February nineteenth and twenty sixth. On Friday, January seventeen, seventh grade students had the opportunity to listen to Holocaust survivor Peter Stern, share his story and experiences. This was a wonderful experience for our students who are also reading historical fiction based on during that era in history. Middle school book fair will be running from February eighteenth to twenty first, and the middle school P T A will be hosting a dodgeball event for students on February twenty first. On January twenty third, the middle school also held their spelling bee. Results were not available right now. And then moving on to the high school, the second semester is underway at the high school. We recently finished up the winter Keystone exams and are starting to prepare for all of the recognitions of the class of twenty twenty five in the months ahead, leading up to graduation on June sixteen. Since the last school board meeting, our performing arts students had had their showcase, their talents in a number of ways, including three performances of the fall flight. This includes the outsiders, winter choral, and band concerts, multiple P M E A district festivals, inter-county bands, and the return of the senior T tradition. In September, in December, we hosted our second annual trade and technical school day, supported by many great partners who showcased a number of opportunities for students. The school hosted its first air rifle competition for N J R O T C units. Deca students competed in the regional competition with a number of outstanding performances that have led to students advancing and to compete at the state level. We also recently held our first signing day for our twelfth grade students who continue to participate in athletics at the college level. Additionally, we want to congratulate, congratulate our cheerleading team who qualified for the U C A Nationals in Orlando for the second year in a row. We want to thank our community for being so generous. The Winter Coat Drive has filled the collective collection bin multiple times. The N J R O T C Toys for Tots campaign collected over a hundred toys. The Giving Tree supported thirty-one student families this year, and the Black Student Union Multicultural Alliance recently donated several blocks of textile care care products to fostering hope. As we look ahead, the ninth and tenth grade class councils are hosting a winter dance, ninth and tenth grade students only, on February twenty eighth. Tickets can be purchased via school pay, and lastly, the spring sports signups are now active and will remain through February twenty first, twenty fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Next, we have Mr. Kohler to present some student awards and recognition.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come in this evening. I'm going to share some of the finest students that we have at the high school. Because we have at least three members of the class of twenty twenty five and a couple of parents here. Maggie, we gave you some bad information. So Maggie said graduation's June sixteenth, so as not to set off any alarm bells, we're not adding ten days on. Graduation is still scheduled for June sixth. First, this evening, I am proud. We have a number of our girls cross-country athletes here this evening. This year's girls cross-country, cross-country team is one of the most successful teams to have ever come through the the district. They are the three-time defending pack champions. They are the three-time defending district champions in the most difficult district in the state, which is a huge accomplishment. And this year, they ascended to their highest placing ever at states where they finished second. So they had an unbelievable year. They've had an unbelievable three years. And so we have a number of them here with us tonight. The team was represented. There were twenty-four different individuals on that team. I think that we have six here tonight. If I miss any of the ones that are here tonight, I will circle back to them. But first, I'd like to recognize Nora Horton. Next, Sylvia Hutchinson. Next, Paige Anarino. Next, Hallie Kish. Next, and before I do this one, Jane Kratz is the, I believe, Jane, you're going to correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to do this from memory, but two-time defending pack champion, top three at districts this year and top ten at states this year as an individual. Did I get those right? Congratulations, Jane. Next, Madam President, Maggie Mullen. Ellie Thompson. Congratulations. All right, and I got everybody, right? Okay. In addition, unable to be here tonight was their coach, who is Coach Tim Marco. He was named by the Mercury as the Girls Cross Country Coach of the Year. And Jane was also identified as the Mercury All Area Cross Country Athlete of the Year. But again, this was a team made up of twenty-four individuals. This was a team that truly represented themselves as a team. And again, is one of the most successful teams that we've had in the history of the district, and I'm so glad that we could have some of them here tonight and the opportunity to recognize them. So congratulations again, ladies. I also want to make mention tonight, we just had a student get a very important award. So Senior Naomi Mendon Hall won the twenty twenty four J R O T C Liberty Bell Scholarship. This is a merit-based award offered by the Military Offers Association of America and goes to students who demonstrate leadership, patriotism, military-bearing scholarship, and general excellence. So I know Naomi isn't here with us this evening, but I wanted to make sure that we recognized her. And then lastly, this evening, I'm recognizing our pack all academic team. This goes to the student, typically a senior, but the student who is at the highest grade level, because we do have one junior here on the list, but who has the highest academic achievement on their team. So our winners for that, for the cheerleading team, was Grace Podliner. For field hockey was Jaslyn Campbell. For boys golf was Noah Grabowitz. For girls golf was Sophia Seagrave Daly. For boys cross-country was William Lockman. For girls cross-country was Lauren Monaco. For boys soccer was Colin Jones. For girls soccer was Fiona Sanders. For girls tennis was Sophie Vu. And for volleyball was Malin Jordan. And we do have one representative here tonight, and that was our football athlete, who was Boone Taguchi. But in addition to being the pack all academic representative for O J R, he also won the Citizenship Award. And the Citizenship Award goes to the student from that all academic team who is also involved with the most activities here at school. So not only did he have the highest academic achievement on the football team, but of all of these high achievers is a student who is a great citizen of our community and very heavily involved. So congratulations, Boone. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler, and congratulations to our students. Once we're done with my report, which is will be done in about five minutes, we'll take a break, and that'll be your time to leave unless you want to stay for the entire meeting. And then I believe Mr. Rodriguez will be out in the hall. We'll take some pictures, too. So that's coming up momentarily here. So each year, the Pennsylvania School Board Association, P S B A, sets aside a time in January to honor school directors for the time commitment that they bring to leading our schools throughout the year. Earlier this evening, we had the opportunity to welcome our school directors to a celebration for their service to our community. We also shared a video with our directors and their loved ones, showing some of our students offering their thanks and appreciation for everything our school board does on behalf of students. So on behalf of the district, our students, our families, and the entire community, thank you, school directors, for all of your hard work on behalf of our children. You have our deepest appreciation and respect. And as I reminded them this earlier this evening, which they don't need any reminding, I want to remind the public, this is an unpaid position. So these folks here volunteer their time to spend with us each month at multiple meetings in order to do what's best for our kids. So I really appreciate their service, and so, thank you. As a reminder, the district will be closed on Monday, February seventeenth, in honor of President's Day weekend. So we have three retirees on tonight's agenda. We have one person who is with us this evening. So I have Angela Daren Camp, a high school social studies teacher for twenty-one years, and Angela is sitting in the back with her husband, but I just have a couple remarks that that I want to read that were provided to me. So Angela has been a vital part of the high school faculty and an essential member of the Social Studies Department for over two decades. In addition to her exemplary teaching of United States history and her dedication to her students, Angela also proposed, designed, and taught the high school Advanced Placement Psychology class. She also ran after the after-school intramural volleyball program and also helped to coach the girls varsity volleyball team. For many years, Angela served as senior class co-advisor and served a vital role in organizing the senior class from ordering their caps and gowns to marching up to get their diplomas for the graduation ceremony. Her humor, teaching expertise, and dedication will be missed, but we wish Angela all the best for a wonderful retirement. So Angela, if you could stand, congratulations on your retirement. Okay. In addition to Angela, we also have, who are not present tonight, Russ Mosteller, who's was in our maintenance department for thirty-five years, and then Greg Amayan, who's a custodian at French Creek for six years. And Mrs. Peterson, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Stout. As Dr. Stout said, we are going to take a brief recess at this time. I know Mr. Rodriguez would like to take some pictures out in the hallway, and the board is more than welcome to go out and say hello to some of our students. I'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We are going to continue on with the agenda. Agenda item six point one, public comment on agenda items. There are two opportunities for public comment. The first section is for information proposals and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to items on the agenda that will be voted on tonight. Speakers are to indicate your name, township of residence, and the items on the agenda to which your comments are addressed. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. The second section will be at the end of the meeting and is for residents to speak on any item. Also, if you have a question for the school board, please email all Board of School Directors at at schoolboardmembers@ojrsd.net, and you will receive a written response. For anyone who'd like to make a comment online, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence. Okay, we are going to move forward to board committee reports. Seven point one, working session. A working session was held on January thirteen, twenty twenty five at six P M. The following committees met at this time. Curriculum and Special Education, Finance, Buildings and Grounds, and Legislative and Policy. Board workshops were held on the following dates, November four, twenty twenty four, and December three, twenty twenty four. Seven point two, Chester County Intermediate Unit, Ms. Munson.
The Chester County Intermediate Unit met on January fifteenth. It was a very busy meeting, full of a lot of information, as usual. They, we reviewed audit findings. There were no findings for either the there's two different budgets that were reviewed for the C C I U, so that was good news. There were some interesting discussions of how the C C I U is already building the pipeline of employees for the new buildings that are being built so that we do not expect the C C I U to have to do like a surge of hiring out of an unknown pool of applicants when we are opening things like the Fred Engel Education Center and the C C D C Great Valley Campus. So those are places that are due to open over the next two years, and the progress is already in place to identify who are the staff that are going to be in those buildings, so that we're not working from the ground up. Another very interesting section was the discussion of preschool special education funding. It may reach a critical point this year, so it is something that educators and school board members should be aware of. The Office of Child Development and Early Learning has a funding formula to apply to preschool special, special education funding, but it is a fixed formula. And the number of students who need these programs has been increasing every single year. It's gotten worse since COVID, and it doesn't look like it's adjusting back down. And so it is something that that all of us need to keep an eye on, because these students who need the special education at the preschool level and the head start level, if they don't get that, then by the time they hit kindergarten, we have an increased burden in trying to address their needs. So it's very much in our best interest to make sure that we support getting proper funding for the preschool and head start programs, and the C C I U is very focused on trying to make sure that they do their part in bringing high-quality education to Chester County preschool students and focusing on that transition into kindergarten so they're ready to go into our kindergarten programs. Those are the big things that I wanted to focus on. The next meeting for C C I U will be Wednesday, February nineteenth, at the T C H S Brandyone Campus, and let's take questions offline.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Curriculum and Special Education Committee, Ms. Sabo.
The Curriculum Committee met as far as the January working session, and there were two agenda items. Dr. Slate reviewed the list of changes for the high school programs and studies. This includes new courses, course changing from in-person to online, and courses being deleted, and course name changes. This is on the agenda for tonight, as four point eight. And Mr. Saltz was reviewed the online addition to the middle school program studies, specifically drama as an E L A elective. This is on for tonight also, fourteen point nine. And the changes to the programs of study on this evening's agenda are for the full board's consideration. As part of Legislative and Policy Committee, Mr. Fuller discussed the update, updated graduation policy, which includes language for a new required personal finance course for high school students, in which will begin in the fall of twenty twenty six. The next Curriculum and Special Education Committee meeting is scheduled during the working session on Monday, February third. Thank you. That's all for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sabo. Finance, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Harmonos.
Good evening. The Finance, Building and Grounds Committee met on January thirteenth for a presentation on the solar energy assessment opportunities. I'm sorry, opportunities for three grants were presented and moved, motioned to be moved on to be voted tonight in item, agenda item fourteen point fifteen. In this item, there is a total of eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars worth of grants for three of the buildings in our district, and those are East Benson, North Coventry, and East Coventry. And the second item we discussed at the committee meeting was the accelerated budget opt-out resolution, which was moved to tonight's agenda for adoption. In this resolution, we are saying that we will stay below the Act One Index tax increase of four percent or less, so that we don't have to meet that accelerated timeline. In addition to several routine items tonight on the agenda, I wanted to highlight two in particular. Item eight point nine is the acknowledge, is acknowledgement of the receipt of the audited financial statements for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And item agenda fourteen point one eight includes professional services agreement. Among those is an agreement for melee L L P to perform the O J R S D audit for the next three school years. So that would be the school years concluding in June of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, and twenty twenty seven. Our next meeting, our next committee meeting will be on February tenth to review the last year's operations results and preliminary budget items for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And that meeting on February tenth will be a standalone, correct? It will just be Finance, Building, and Grounds?
Yeah, anybody else can go.
Okay.
They're all invited.
Yes, all are invited, but the only agenda items will be for your committee. Thank you. Seven point five Legislative and Policy Committee, Ms. Evans.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine. No, no, it's fine. So the Legislative and Policy Committee met at the working session meeting on January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. We covered policy two seventeen regarding graduation requirements, policy, or I'm sorry, regulation twenty-two thirteen A, awarding of original high school credit through alternative methods, policy two oh one, admissions of students, regulation two oh one A, early admission to kindergarten and first grade, and then several, a couple policies and regulations regarding the language in the illegal drug and alcohol abuse policies and regulations related to that. That's it.
Thank you very much. Personnel Committee, Mr. Chester.
Good evening. The Personnel Committee did not meet.
Thank you very much. Okay. Agenda item eight, recommended routine matters. Consent items. May I have a motion to approve recommended routine matters consent items eight point two through eight point fourteen as action consent items?
So moved.
Dr. Rattoli. Mr. Harmonos, any discussion? I will just note that these agenda items include our the acknowledgement of the receipt of the school district's comprehensive plan. I do believe that this is mandatory for us to update and, or sorry, review and accept at this time. I appreciate the work that was done to keep us compliant. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item nine, the recommended routine matters. Nine point one, acknowledged receipt of donations, contribution, and gifts. May I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of donations, contributions, and gifts as presented? And this, sorry, this month, we are acknowledging at the high school, Diana Cliff Bridges made a hundred dollar donation in honor of Melissa Booth to be used toward the high school graphic arts program. And Dallas Fries made a thousand dollar gift to help offset coast posting twenty twenty four athletic events. At East Coventry Elementary School, Kristen Heard Boku LLC donated large paper rolls and dispenser cutters valued at one thousand dollars. At East Benson Elementary, the P T A donated seven hundred dollars for a sixth-grade field trip to the M C C C Challenger Learning Center on January twenty five, seven hundred dollars for a third-grade trip to Riverbend on May nine, three hundred and fifty for a first-grade field trip to Elmwood Park Zoo on April twenty five, seven hundred dollars for a second-grade field trip to Legoland on February seven, seven hundred dollars for a fourth-grade trip to Paradise Farm Camps on May five, and five hundred dollars for an in-house field trip assembly by the Indian-run Environmental Education Center. At French Creek Elementary, the P T A donated one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars to Chartwell's Food Service for catering to Veterans Day breakfast and one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars towards the third-grade field trip to Crystal Cave on October thirty, twenty twenty four, and the fourth-grade field trip to Franklin Institute on November fifteen, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion? So moved. Ms. Chevelle Fuller.
Second.
Dr. Rattoli, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item ten, ten point one, motion to approve routine matters. Ten point two through ten point five as action consent items. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos. Mr. Chester, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item eleven, board discussion. Is there any discussion that the board would like at this time? Thank you. Agenda item twelve, old business. Do we have any old business, Mrs.?
No, we do not, Mrs. Peterson.
Thank you. News business of the approval of personnel matters. Agenda item thirteen point one, a motion to approve personnel matters is consent items thirteen two point through thirteen point seven. Do I have a motion to approve the following personnel matters, which are items thirteen point two through thirteen point seven as action consent items as presented? Mr. Chester.
Second.
Dr. Rattoli, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes. And we're moving into new business in agenda item fourteen point one. May I have a motion for the approval of the reformation of local board procedures? Or is it reaffirmation? Reaffirmation, thank you. May I have an approval of the reaffirmation of local board procedures, board governance standards, and code of conduct as presented? So moved. Ms. Munson. Dr. Atoli. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point two, the approval of school board meeting and working session dates for twenty-five, twenty-six. May I have a motion for the approval of school board meeting and working session dates for the twenty-five, twenty-six year as presented?
Second.
Ms. Shevval Fuller and Dr. Atoli, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point three, the approval of school calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. May I have public agenda items, or public agendas, I think twice before, uh, this evening's vote. Um, so I know that the, um, board did, um, their diligence over the last two, uh, meetings to make sure all were represented in this calendar. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point four, the approval of the fifteen oh two local holidays resolution for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. May I have a motion for the approval of fifteen oh two local holidays resolution for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented? So moved. Ms. Munson. Dr. Atoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen, fourteen point five, the ratification of homebound instruction. May I have a motion for the ratification of homebound instruction as presented? So moved. Ms. Seba?
Second.
Ms. Shevval Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point six, the approval of out-of-state overnight student trips. May I have a motion for the approval of out-of-state overnight student trips as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Atoli. Ms. Seba. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point seven, the approval of conference attendance. May I have a motion for the approval of conference attendance as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos. Dr. Atoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point eight, the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six high school program of studies changes. May I have a motion for the approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six high school program of studies changes as recommended by the Curriculum and Special Education Committee from the January thirteen, twenty twenty-five working session meeting as presented? So moved. Ms. Seba?
Second.
Ms. Shevval Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point nine, the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six middle school program of study changes. May I have a motion for the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six middle school program of studies changes as recommended by the Curriculum and Instruction Committee from the January thirteen, twenty twenty-five working session meeting as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Atoli?
Second.
Ms. Seba, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point ten, approval of student activity club advisors and student officers. May I have a motion for the approval of student activity club advisors and student officers in accordance with the provisions of Section five eleven of the Pennsylvania School Code for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented? So moved. Ms. Shevval Fuller?
Second.
Dr. Atoli, any discussion? Uh, I would like to extend my thanks once again to, to all of our staff that, um, puts in the time, energy, and effort to uh, advise our students. I know it is appreciated by our students and their families. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point eleven, the approval of twenty twenty-five spring community aquatics program. May I have a motion, uh, for the approval of the twenty twenty-five spring up community aquatics program as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Atoli?
Second.
Ms. Seba, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point twelve, the approval of an accelerated budget opt-out resolution certifying tax rate within inflation index of the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. May I have a motion for the approval of an accelerated budget opt-out resolution certifying tax rate within inflation index twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year as recommended by the Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee at the January thirteen working session meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Harmonos and Dr. Atoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point thirteen, the approval of transfer of accounts. May I have a motion for the approval of transfer of accounts recommended by the school district's auditor to close the general fund, capital reserve fund, capital projects fund, and the internal service fund for the fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-four as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos.
Second.
Dr. Atoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen dot fourteen, the approval of farming land lease with Bean Farms. May I have a motion for the approval of farming land lease with Bean Farms for a one-year period, April one, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Atoli.
Second.
Ms. Munson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen dot fifteen, the approval of board resolutions to apply for solar energy grants. May I have a motion for the approval of board resolutions to apply for P A solar energy grants as recommended by the Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee at the January thirteen, twenty twenty-five working session meeting as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos.
Second.
Ms. Shevval Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen dot sixteen, the award of bid for category one fiber optic connectivity of transport and internet through federal E-rate program. May I have a motion for the award of bid for category one fiber optic connectivity of transport and internet through federal E-rate program as presented? So moved. Ms. Munson.
Second.
Dr. Atoli, any discussion?
Well, this would be one of, an example of one of the things that the CCIU negotiates on behalf of the districts in Chester County so that we can take advantage of better pricing, so. It's great to mention that. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen dot seventeen, the award of bid for category two network switching equipment through the federal E-rate program. May I have a motion for the award of bid for category two network switching equipment through federal E-rate program in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars as presented?
So moved.
Dr. Atoli?
Second.
Mr. Harmonos, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen dot eighteen, the approval, ratification of professional services maintenance agreements. May I have a motion for the approval, ratification of professional services maintenance agreements as presented? So moved. Ms. Munson?
Second.
Ms. Shevval Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Hit for new business. Thank you. Uh, we are going to move forward to public comment. Agenda item fifteen point one, information proposals and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to any item. Speakers are to indicate your name and township of residence. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. Also, if you have a question for the school board, please email all board of school directors at school board members at OJ RSD dot net, and you will receive a response. For anyone online who'd like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence.
Thank you. Colleen Blute, North Coventry, East Coventry Township. I guess you're waiting for something really good tonight. Nope. Ms. Crumbrine?
Good evening. My name is Mark Woolfrey. I'm with South Coventry, and I'm a nineteen ninety graduate of O J Roberts. And I have the topic for interview, the, your school, our school has brought in a program called the Commonwealth Pennsylvania School Bus Safety Program. Um, and it is not working correctly. Your, your systems are not set up correctly. They are creating false tickets for people. And, um, just for case example, my vehicle, H twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four, seven thirteen A M, there's a video clearly showing my vehicle passing a school bus. Three quarters of the way past the bus, suddenly the stop sign comes out. So the lights weren't on, stop sign wasn't out. When the vehicle was passing the, the bus, you can see, you see the license plate of the vehicle when you're finally, the, uh, when the stop, stop sign comes out, you can see the license plate. When the license plate starts to move, you can see the license plate of my vehicle. Clearly not a violation. The, uh, regulate, the state of Pennsylvania's regulation or law says that a, a, um, very specifically, that it must be the lights on and the stop sign extended for a vehicle to be guilty of this violation. Uh, I know, uh, several other people in the area that have gotten these tickets for the same thing and have said they went back and looked at the video and said, oh, I paid it because I, I didn't realize that, uh, I wasn't guilty either. So now you have people that aren't guilty have paid their fines. I, I applied for an appeal back on September tenth and have received no information. I'm, you know, I, I did check the system again today and saw that that system is still saying hearing pending. Uh, just let you know that their documentation is quite odd. Um, the, the, the contestation request received, it actually is re- Florida School Bus Infraction Detection Enforcement. So that you're, they, and it says Miami Day Police Department. So I mean, they're, the documentation they're giving from this company that you've hired is for and not correct. It's, it's inaccurate. Um, so there, and I still have yet to have this appeals hearing, which I understand is supposed to happen all the way up in Allentown at some point, and I will be there. I'm not paying this three hundred dollars. It's, the person who drive my vehicle is clearly not guilty of this. And I'm not, I own several vehicles. I have several drivers in my house. So that's, the, anybody who want to see the video, I would be more than happy to show it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Seeta? Okay, board discussion, follow-up, and request for information. Does the board have anything that they would like to discuss, follow-up, or request for additional information at this time?
I was just curious, have we had anybody else reach out to us about this? Being wrongly accused?
No, we haven't, but we can certainly, I'm not, it, it definitely happens.
Continue, please. Mr. Herman, please continue.
Sure. Um, so the individual, uh, police jurisdiction would certify it other than South Coventry Township, which is our police department. So we'll be happy to take a look at that. I'm happy.
Sorry. We are going to move forward. Uh, if there's any, is there any additional board discussion at this time? Okay. Then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.